Sometimes it's hard to see those blessings, but they're all around us. Last week was a wonderful spring break with great weather. Not so great on the weekend, but it allowed us to recognize and count our blessings when we have them. As we work together here today, let us be mindful of the needs and thoughts of everyone else, and that we listen, and that we talk less and learn. And I ask a special prayer for our counterparts to the north in Duval County, as I go through a very tough time with the changing of the school names, no matter what their decision. There are angry people on both sides, and we ask that people would call on, and that maybe we learn from one another and how to go forward from this. We ask those all here in Jesus. Thank you. Amen. I'm not sure what that was.
It reminded me, I mean, it was the first time I saw something talking back, and I went, whoa.
She's got a little recollection.
Welcome.
And a female.
I'd like to call the board meeting agenda summary workshop to order. For today's date is March 23rd, 2020. Welcome citizens of Clay County. I want to take this opportunity to thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedule to attend today's school board workshop. Those of you who are visitors, few, well, from the district, but you know, we don't see you all during the workshop, so it's great to have you off your... And as always, if there are any questions, well, means feel welcome to ask. Let's start Mr. Rosky.
All right. Good morning. I hope everybody's doing well.
Turn my phone on, Chris.
You may or may not know this, but today's the first day of the fourth marking period, so we're heading towards the home stretch for the 2021 school year. So with that, I'll go ahead and review the agenda. Our first recognition is our National Science Foundation 2020 Presidential Award winner in Excellence in Science Teaching, Shakrika Smith from Discovery Oaks, who had a presentation recognition there.
Do we know when she finds out if she's...
I don't know. I've asked Mr. Romoto when they're...
One of the top six is very good. You know, that's awesome.
When is it?
He said it'll be a few months before the...
A few months.
Few months before the committee will meet and make a decision.
Awesome.
So then we'll also have a presentation, because April is school media month. So our very first one is the minutes. Is there any questions there? Okay, number two is proposed supplement allocations for '21-'22. Just a couple of quick things. You know, one of the things I point out to you is you've got a big, huge packet, so I don't expect you to know what's in there, but I'll tell you what's in there. The only changes that have occurred since then are, remember, we have added one instructional application facilitator to each school, which is the technology coach position that we talked about, and we had the presentation on synergy for the implementation of that. So that's added to every school. Those schools that already had what was called a technology coach, something a little different, those were taken away. So every school now has one of those relative to help us with the implementation, not only of synergy, but of every application. So that's a difference there. There was a change in CBA, deletion for FCC LA, but added a department head. It has to do with, to make sense based on their curriculum, what they do at CBA. There was an additional football coach at Orange Park Junior, an additional track coach at Wilkinson Junior because of numbers of students involved in those programs. Just as a reminder, one of the things that we tried to focus on, just like with allocations for all other positions, my number one goal is stability. Based on where we are this year, what we've experienced this year, I thought it was best to not make any changes relative to supplements. I would also remind the board that we do on occasion add supplements along the way. So if there is something that's noticed, we'll make those changes as they become more apparent, you know, down the road. And so I know that that's a big, huge packet that you're just getting now, but I thought I would save you the drama of trying to figure out no changes, other than the instructional coach, the instructional application facilitator, which the board approved that job description last month.
Is that summary in here that you're reading too?
I can send a summary out to you, or give you a little piece of paper that has that on there relative to that.
That would be helpful.
I'll also say, when it comes to all, overall supplements, you know, prior to this job, I did a little bit of time in human resources, and we had studied supplements, and this was always an area in which Clay County is proud of the fact that we kind of lead surrounding districts in our supplements, and what we actually pay our folks that do supplement at positions. So it's an area of pride for the district.
Oh, we know it's important.
For sure.
Makes our school...
So number three then, reappointments of instructional support personnel. Just a quick reminder, this will be a big, huge packet. You know, we have 5,000 employees, so there'll be a packet that'll be provided to you prior to that, that'll have, gosh, 3,000, 4,000 names on the first go-round. Remember, it's a couple-month process to get us to the point where all employees are reappointed. We start off with our PSC, CC, and AC teachers, as well as our support employees. Then in June, we have our administrators and our probationary annual, you know, teachers are then reappointed then. That does not mean that everyone's name will appear in the April board agenda. For example, if the teacher has not done their recertification, hasn't completed their recertification form and applied to the state, they in essence have, similar to being in college, a hold on their account, and once they clear their hold, then they come back on the next month. So I know that, especially when I was in HR, you know, I would get panicky phone calls from people, "Hey, my name's not there, hey, my name's not there, hey, my name's not there", that kind of thing. So remember, it's a four-month process leading us up to next school year along the way. So it's one big packet now in April, and then it's embedded within the personnel consent agenda each month from there on forward. So number four is the personnel consent agenda. I just wanted to remind everyone that there will be a job description on there for the director run building official. Remember, that was the position that was described within the meeting that you had with Ms. Ellis related to Ed First. Remember, we had to edit the job description first prior to adding the allocation, so it'll take us a couple of months to catch up with that one particular job heading to next year. Okay, number five is the renewal of physicians in medical facilities. You know that our support employees receive a physical. This is the process by which we approve the providers that provide those physicals. I'm proud to say that, I don't know what Ms. Troutman did, but typically we only get like three companies that are willing to even do this kind of work. So it looks like two, three, four, five, six, seven different companies willing to provide physicals to our employees.
Were we able to find anybody in the south end of the county? I'm thinking...
Yeah, because we have two that we use, Asa Health, which is a partnership with our community partnership school, and the other is Village Doctors. So there are two down in the Keystone area, so, and I would think Asa Health, because they are one of our partners for a community partnership school, maybe they would be willing to.
Sure, we can reach out.
So I'd like to reach out to them.
Yes.
Sure.
Asa Health and Whiskey Island.
And Village Doctors, those are two down there. But Asa Health, I was thinking, because it's with our community partnership school, maybe they would be willing to.
Awesome. Thank you. And so if we approved this next week, we could always amend it and bring it back.
We can do an amendment and add some to it. So number six, Kelly Services Agreement. This is an agreement that costs nothing, but it improves the efficiency by which we report time. This will prevent the payroll secretaries from having to manually, you know, approve time for individuals who become more automated their whole day. So that's what this particular amendment is.
I just have one on that, and it's just because of Kelly Services. I noticed that Alachua County also uses Kelly Services, which I'm sure a lot of districts do, and I know we've been having a hard time getting substitutes in the Keystone area, so I'm wondering if maybe, and I don't know how this would go about this, but if Kelly Services could say, you know, maybe we could reach out to the Alachua, since maybe we'd be able to get some people from that area to you to come to the Keystone here, because I know we've had some trouble getting to the location, and maybe because we're not kind of branching out to that.
So this is a good, that's a good idea. There is a little bit of competitiveness that goes with that industry.
Right.
Where counties are not as willing to share their resources with people coming over. We can certainly reach out to Kelly to see if we could maybe want to do that.
And only because they've had a hard time, and I've had a lot of concerns about that too, so.
When is our contract up with Kelly Services? When does this run through?
Uh, I think it started in '18, so I think it's '15, so...
Was it '15 or '13?
'23. I would have to look it up.
I'm just thinking about Ms. Clark's comment at the last meeting, wanting us to reevaluate.
Yeah, so I would, I did send an email out, and I would invite any board member up to view that presentation and see that presentation, if there's concerns about that particular issue.
I'm not saying, don't we have a agreement with Duval, or isn't there something that the Duval substitutes can come to Clay County?
We got some of their substitutes. They don't use Kelly, they use another service.
That's why. Okay, no, I'm sorry.
Right.
I knew that there was some input from the Duval area, that's why.
Okay, round number seven, proclamation for teacher appreciation week, May 3rd through 8th, with teacher appreciation day being May 4th. The next item is administrative professionals week, which is the week of the 19th of April to the 23rd, with April 21st being administrative professionals day. And then number nine brings us to out-of-state travel. Number 10 is the Ingenuity Courseware Agreement. This is Ingenuity, last year, Ingenuity is the courseware that we use for credit recovery in all of our summer programs, 9 through 12, or 7 through 12, I should say. $99,000 is this contract. It's a pretty good program and has been highly successful. 11 is summer programs, manual and calendar. It's actually very comprehensive. It includes our voluntary pre-K, our third grade summer reading camp in the summer, our sixth grade and junior high, our high school 9th through 12, our credit recovery for Algebra I, our boot camp, ESOL, and ESY Extended School Year. You can see it's very, very in-depth. I would call the board to page three for a good summary. Page three is a good summary of all of the programs in summertime.
I do have a question on that, on the document. First of all, for the second and third grade reading camps, are they going to be offered at Clay Hill and McRae? I didn't see it there, and I'm thinking because of where they're located, again.
Second, third grade reading camps, Grove Park, Keystone, Charles E. Bennett, Wilkinson Elementary, Doctors Inlet Elementary.
Okay, but not at McRae or Clay Hill? And I'm thinking that's those, again, because of their location, it's very difficult for them. I mean, we're talking, to Keystone Elementary from that school is about 15 miles.
Yeah, I think, I think these are the schools, I think traditionally we've had them at those schools. I think there's been no change to the schools that we've offered them in.
Mr. Rosky, do we provide transportation to that?
Would we be able to add one of those schools? How difficult would it be to incorporate?
We can certainly look at adding one of those schools. I mean, I think what we're trying to do is create centers for all of our programs to kind of make it more efficient, since funding is really not available for summer schools. So this is really...
But they are very rural areas where, you know, for someone from McRae to go up to one, or even, you know, Wilkinson to come into Middleburg even, or, you know, it's a bit of a hike.
Yeah, it's a distance. It's a hike. The other question I have on the ESE Extended School Year, I think it's page 26 of the manual, talks about the three schools, and it says Ridgefield High School, Middleburg High School, and Keystone Elementary, but yet underneath it, it talks about being at Keystone High School. I'm wondering if that's an error of the top. Should it be Keystone High School rather than Keystone Elementary School? Because, see, they talk about the nurse and all the different people they're going to have.
Yeah, I'm assuming it is. Because it does say assistance Keystone Juniors, Junior Senior High School.
Yeah, see, so I'm wondering if that should be a high school rather than an elementary school, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. That's all I just, thank you. No problem. Thanks.
For number 12, school library media month, a proclamation. For number 13, proclamation on national school nurses week. Certainly love our nurses. Number 14 is something new. It's called Purple Up Day. Okay, so what Purple Up Day is...
A starting early.
Is, for those students that are military connected, the month of the military child. In Florida, it's being celebrated on April 21st, although it's recognized as April 15th in other areas. So what I didn't realize about Purple Up Day, because I was trying to figure out why purple, purple up, and all of that, but if you, I'm being told this is true now, if you mixed Air Force Blue with Army Green with Navy Blue, Green Red, and Coast Guard Blue all together, it would equal purple.
There you go.
So that's how we came up with it.
I thought it was red and blue were purple, but...
Allegedly, if you mix them all together, it's purple, and thus, Purple Up Day.
Several of us are on board.
There you go. That's right.
You get the purple logo.
Today's a purple day, yeah.
If you don't have purple, red, white, and blue is always a good option.
There you go. There you go. Got it all covered.
Always. And what is the national school nurses week? What is the dates of that? I don't see it.
The same week as the...
National...
School nurses week. Usually it's the same week as the teacher of the, or teacher week.
6th through 12th of May.
Of May, yeah. Of May, of course. It's the same week as teachers' week. Very good. All right, thanks.
So then we're up to 15, which is allocation changes for 2021. And then 16 is allocation changes for '21-'22. There's nothing added at this point. And then 17 is our monthly financial reports. 18 is budget amendments. 19 is the famous deletion of certain items report. 20 is renewal of architectural services. You can see the four architects listed halfway or three quarters of the way down on the 21 is the bid renewal for the ramp stairs system, as well as flooring services, and they were awarded to GA Manufacturing out of Keystone and teal tile carpet. 22 is preliminary final plans for Lake Side Junior High School restroom renovations. Play folder there. 23 is the elementary school R, architect contract. They recommended using the same one in the effort to save money for architectural costs.
It'll be the same design as Discovery Oaks?
Same design as Discovery Oaks.
And when do we expect to start building?
We'll start the process next year, okay, with an opening in '23.
So we'd start like August, when of next year?
Yeah, August. Yeah.
I have a question on the role.
Sure.
I don't see Bryce here, so maybe somebody... That when she, she was going to get an architect to look over the Keystone area, and I wanted, and I was going to include, I haven't heard anything back from that, so do we know?
So it's my understanding that they're doing a feasibility study for that piece of land? I'm assuming that's in the works already.
Okay.
But I can double check.
That's what they were going to include, Tina, in on the, will they actually come out and look at, that's what we talked about.
On feasibility study.
Right, so they're, they haven't come out physically to look at anything?
Not to my knowledge.
That you would be there for the feasibility study?
Well, just that I would be, you know, be included in some...
That's what we said here at our board meeting, when we talked about it, to include Tina in that, when they come out and look at the property, she is concerned about, and...
Oh, I wasn't aware that you would be there. I was, I understood it as after the fact, that they would do, they would look at, I mean, you've got the architectural, no help. And it was more, as I recall, we were talking about the St. John's Urban Management rules and, and water retention, I mean, there were all sorts of different phases of that.
And that's why I'd like to be there, so they can explain that to me.
Yeah. Well, I hope they'll explain to all of us. Yeah.
So 24 then is Middleburg High School restroom renovation. 25 is pre-qualification of contractors. That concludes the consent agenda on the discussion agenda.
Can we go back to the feasibility study? You'll follow up with Bryce and find out why Tina hasn't been included?
Yeah.
Or if they haven't, maybe they haven't physically been out yet.
Maybe they haven't.
But it was important to her to be there when they go out to the property, and we talked about it here, so that needs to follow through.
I'll talk to Bryce, she didn't have training this morning, so I'll...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Person.
Okay, human resource special action day. There is special action, so if you have any questions, please, please give me a call. So then that takes us to the public hearing to approve the adoption of the English language arts material. As you know, this is a year for adoption of English language arts. This process began many months ago, with teacher representatives from Yead School, who then reviewed and vetted using the state instrument for reviewing these materials. And really, the district was looking for materials that were K-12 articulation aligned, for ones that are aligned with the best standards, which are now currently being implemented, and ones that had ancillary materials that had good online support for those materials. So many, many people over many months have gotten us to this point where we are now, and those products are listed on page three, which are by SaaS Learning. Okay, and then the last item, D4, is the athletic field maintenance, RFP. To be honest, I'm not really sure where to go with this one. We started this item back December 1st. We had a board workshop related to this particular item. We had it brought up at the December 10th, a regular school board meeting. Questions were then raised by board members related to this item. We then brought it back to a board workshop on December 15th. On January 7th, we had the board chair open for a motion. Ms. Clark made a motion to approve. There was no second, so the motion stopped there, so the item stopped there. We then had the coordinator of district athletics go out and meet with every board member relative to this RFP, and awarding on this RFP. Since then, there's been no questions, no comments related to this issue. I just got to bring three things to the board's attention related to this. This has been a free, almost four months now, that we've been working on this particular one item to be approved. I remind the board that Florida Department of Education Rule 6A 2.0010, which states that all educational facilities and ancillary facilities constructed by the school board will comply with the state requirements for educational facilities, which within that, Chapter 5 says that athletic fields were provided shall be maintained in a safe and acceptable condition for their intended functions. Okay? So I would also point out to the board, not only do we have an obligation to maintain these fields, but you also have to have a category three ornamental license issued by the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. There's only one person that works for the entire Clay County School Board that has such a license. Okay, so this is a service that needs to be provided in order to provide athletic fields for our students. We have no one in-house that can do that particular job. The state has state rules saying that we must do this job, in essence. When I inquired about RFPs, because I've been around a long time, 31 years, and I asked basically, does anyone know the time where RFP bid was not approved by the school board? And the answer I received was no. So I'm not really sure where else to go with this item. We've attempted to make modifications based on concerns. We went from a three-year contract to a one-year contract. I know this, and maybe we'll have pictures sent. We have an obligation to maintain our facilities. The amount of money that's paid out of district funds, $42,000, is really a pittance in comparison to what other districts spend on field maintenance. So this really should not be an issue. I'm not sure why it's an issue, but I will say that I just want our grounds taken care of for our students. It's really just that simple in my book. I'm not sure if I left anything out, so I'm going to refer to Mr. Scrimmel, does he want to add to that?
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's pretty much it. I mean, I think the big thing for the board to remember with this agenda item is, it's a lot bigger than just athletics. You know, I like to consider it a multi-purpose facility. These facilities hold graduations, ROTC competitions, band competitions. Anyone that rents our facilities uses these facilities as well. You know, and if any board member would like to visit a site, I'd be more than happy to go out there with you and show you what our needs are, so.
Any questions?
What do we need to do to get it back on, on the table?
It's on the table now.
So what do we...
And so it'll be brought forward at this particular, at this board meeting. And I'm hoping for the, for the board to consider this. You know, for me, I consider myself to be a very simple, practical man. The grass needs to be taken care of. $42,000 in comparison to what other districts spend on this issue is very minimal cost involved.
Can I ask how much do other districts spend?
Up to $400,000, I think, was Lake County's.
$400,000?
Of course.
And so most of them...
Of course, are we comparing it to the same-sized county?
Lake is approximately the same size. It's a tad bigger.
Mr. Rosky, I'll also just add that, you know, it is the expectation of our parents in our community. I have had some coaches and parents reach out and, you know, want to know where this is headed. They are concerned. It's tough being where we are in Clay County, you know, to our, I guess, if I'm how you're looking at it, to our right in Bradford, they have a, you know, full $250,000 turf complex, which is a little exorbitant in my, in my opinion.
One high school.
At Bradford, yes, ma'am.
One high school.
And then in St. John's, you know, it's also, it's also very nice as well, so it's just the expectations of our community is that, you know, we do have decent facilities.
So the additional expense, because obviously it costs more than $42,000 to maintain these fields.
Yes, ma'am.
Is internal funds?
Yes, ma'am.
How are the internal funds generated?
So athletic directors from ticket sales, so parents coming to games, and then also any kind of sponsorships or partnerships that the athletic directors make.
And we've had, I mean, I know in our conversation, we were talking about sponsorships from like, I was trying to think of the soccer net situation. I mean, we have people who are willing to sponsor our teams and put money forward, but also help with equipment and that sort of thing.
For sure, for sure, yeah. Athletic, and that's one of the things in my position I try to do, is help train our athletic directors on how to create more revenue streams for their student athletes. That's big.
And so this is done by the athletic director already? So to anticipate the athletic director to be out there cutting the grass?
Well, this is a lot more than just grass cutting, but, yes, ma'am.
Which, and it includes bug killing, it includes getting the sandspurs out?
Correct.
I mean, I can imagine, you know, falling or whatever, as a soccer player sliding to kick a ball and running into a patch of sandspurs. That would just be delightful, you know?
Well, those are separate licenses too. You've got an ornamental pest control license to spray for, like mole crickets, which tear up the field, create issues with the field, fire ants and those things. There's a separate, like a pesticide license to deal with the weeds and those things that are inevitable, common when you have grass in Florida.
And it's, it's a different grass on the football field, so is it different?
It's a Bermuda grass, you know, it's like a golf course type of grass.
Because I was at Oakley for the pass and review, and that was held on the football field. And of course, I'm sitting there thinking about this RFP and going, whoa, look at this grass. You know, I mean, it's really, it's special.
We have some surfaces that are not serviced by that, and they're not playable, nor are they safe to, you know, twist ankles, tear ACLs, those types of things are the inevitable.
And how many students do we have in our athletic programs, approximately?
Just under 6,000.
6,000.
But then we have to add band.
Band.
With the students that utilize it.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, Orange Park Junior, we continue to get evades because of the standing water, like sandspurs.
We're working on that drainage. We're working on that drainage in Orange Park Junior.
Awesome. It's a never-ending battle in that area. Awesome. It's a never-ending battle in that area.
That's, that's it for the agenda, ma'am, Joe.
Any questions? Any other questions or comments? Before we move on to our next agenda item, Mr. Bickner, do you have anything to add that we're going to need to know for anything? I don't see anything, just making sure.
There's nothing on there that, that's probably the biggest two items of the two on the discussion agenda that have been spoken of. I don't know that there will be parents that come in and talk about the English program. There probably will be. As to the RFP, I think Mr. Rossky and Mr. Scrimmel will cover it entirely, so.
And the, that is a discussion item for the English language. If we have a lot of parents that come in, I, I mean, as the chair, you can change the discussion item like before the superintendent's presentation. So if there are a lot of people there.
It's a public hearing, so they would speak at the time of the item.
At the time, well, true, but if we don't, these are discussion items. These are not.
You can bring it up to the board at the beginning of the meeting, asking the board, do we all agree to move that public hearing up to the beginning of the meeting? And if we all agree, then we can do that.
Okay.
Kind of handle it.
And I think it's important that when we take this item up as a board, part of our discussion and explanation to the community needs to be the expectation that whatever curriculum we're using, whatever curriculum maps we have in this county are going to be aligned to the Florida standards. That we're not incorporating political agendas, that this is not an opportunity to indoctrinate children, that this is much like what the governor recently released. We're committed to quality education in the state of Florida, and we're gonna teach according to the standards.
And having spoken with folks in the English language area, because I had concerns. I mean, having taught, making meetings without books, whatever, making certain that there were, there were resources available to the students, resources available to families, I felt very strongly about, very good about the process that we've gone through and encouraging and using our teachers. And then within that also, did we, have we had an open? I know when we had our last adoption, and I want to say it was math or science, we had the room off to the side open so that people could come in and look at the materials. And are we going to be doing that as well, or has that been available to families?
Yes, ma'am. We're going to have that in one of the labs from five till six beforehand.
Great.
We, which it was part of the paper, um, put in the Clay today. That was part of the advertisement.
Good. So that that's been advertised, that they have the opportunity to come in?
Yes.
Put their hands on the, on the materials?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, that's, that's critical to a lot of parents as well.
There, it's also in their, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to talk that way.
No, you're good, you're good.
It's also in the advertisement that we have materials in our department, which if anyone would like to look at those even today. We have those over in our office, and they're able to make an appointment through Ms. Onora and to review the materials.
Great.
And is that posted on our website?
It's also posted on the website. Links to these student materials are also on the website.
But is it clearly on the website that parents may view the material? Is that, you know, they open up our, our website and they can see, parents, if you'd like to view, click here.
If they go to our instructional, if they go to the instructional resources page, they'll see it. I'm not sure about the, the main page.
We might want to add that, make it more simple.
Could we link that to the agenda, so that there's a hyperlink? If parents are on our agenda, they can be taken immediately to.
Yeah, we can.
That just makes it accessible and acceptable. And I, I think it, it also might be helpful if we had a hyperlink to the Florida standards, so that parents understand while our resources are important that we're using, what drives education is the standards themselves. So these are, just like what we said, they're resources. They're not a.
I know that there are some, I mean, if you go into language arts, let's say, you should have a hyperlink to the Florida, the best standards. So, I say should, because they used to be able to get there, so.
But for, for us who, who live in the education world, we know where to go to find those things. But if we can make it really accessible on the agenda for parents, I think that would ease a lot of these concerns about what are they sneaking in? What's happening in the classroom? What are they not telling me? You know what I mean?
Absolutely.
If it's just fair and easily accessible, I think that would ease some fears.
Is this, oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, on the actual link in the agenda for the board, there is a link to the page that lists every item, and there's a hyperlink to the resources.
Great. And this, I, I feel like I'm in a little cocoon. Does the entire state of Florida go through an, an adoption at this point?
The state of Florida has, this is the English language arts year for, for adoption. And then next year's math, so they predict, or they tell us what we're to do.
So, exactly. So if families are like, well, they're not doing it in St. John's County, or they're not doing it in, well, yes, they are.
And that would be that district's choice.
The state, and it's covering all the counties.
Well, you could say, a county can choose to postpone an adoption.
Right, right.
Other counties may be doing that, but we're following the schedule.
We're following the schedule.
And I can tell you that St. John's is following the schedule as well, so if they start it.
Usually the first one we look at. Very good. Do you, and shall we move on to the next workshop?
The next, the next item's on cell phones, so I thought I would, I would help the board out with this discussion, so the board would have a starting point to have a discussion. I passed out two pieces of paper to you today, and then we passed a folder out to you last time that we met. The two pieces of paper that you were given today was a summary of all the pieces of paper that we taped the last time, which is, if you take a look at it, we tried to, to nail down the major points of each one of those county's policies. So you can see, in Clay, we have what our policy is, or what our student code of conduct says. And then for Sarasota, Leon, Collier, et cetera, we tried to just grab the, the one sentence, to get it down to a very small amount of, of information. That's front and back on that piece of paper. It's kind of just to show you what other people are doing. Then, we also surveyed our, our administrators in the district. I think it's important to recognize that anything in the code of conduct or in, you know, board policy has to be implemented. And the ability to implement it, and the people involved in the implementation are important to consider their thoughts in the process. The second piece of paper that I gave you was essentially what's in our policy, where it says, bring your own device, what's in the code of conduct related to cell phones. And then through the survey process and consultation with a group of folks, here are some things that we thought, language items, that we thought the board ought to consider, that wouldn't handicap people at the school level, but also provides some more clarity to our policy related to cell phones. So when we surveyed administrators, it's kind of interesting to me how there's a difference between elementary, junior high, and high school. In elementary, when we looked at it and we asked our principals at the school level how they handled cell phones, et cetera, basically universally powered off during the instructional day. I mean, we're talking twenty-five of twenty-five, like, not even one person said anything different. So I feel really comfortable recommending that to the board when it comes to our elementary schools. We thought additional language to include things like, it's a privilege to have electronic device at school prop, you know, on school property. It's not a, it's not, you don't have a right to have this. It's a privilege. And then the second part would be the language that would be something along the lines of, students may use the electronic devices during instructional time for educational purposes when it's sanctioned by the classroom teachers. There are times where a teacher wants the student to use the cellphone, and we don't want it to be against either board policy or, in this case, the code of student conduct. And we wanted to make sure that people expressly knew that if the teacher gives permission, that you can use it, okay? Sometimes they do use it for educational purposes. And then it says, otherwise, the electronic device must be powered off and out of sight during the instructional day. So I feel really good about elementary. That's essentially what we're doing now, according to everyone that's out there. We feel like that's reasonable, rational, et cetera. When you start to move into secondary, it becomes a little bit more complicated because of the age of the learner. In junior high, when we asked secondary administrators, out of the junior high, seven responded, hey, totally off. So similar to elementary school, okay? Some, you know, thirteen said they have some sort of workable policy related to when they could and couldn't. Seven said they want it totally off during, during the school day. So you'll notice that the language suggestion there is, it's a privilege, that statement. Students may use the electronic device when instructed to by the, by the teacher. Okay, similar to the elementary language. Student may not use the electronic, we thought it was important to kind of add these caveats to it for obvious reasons when you hear the language. Students may not use electronic device in any area considered a personal space, which would include the restroom and the locker room. Because, as you know, that could lead to all kinds of things that we don't even want to talk about here, you know, relative to student behavior in those. So we thought kind of putting that in there was a good point to put in. And then the last item says, students may not use electronic devices to accept or make phone calls or video conferencing during school hours unless instructed to do so by administration. So we're, we're, and we think those are all pretty rational from the people that are actually implementing the policy related to that. Now, in full transparency, the, the, the issue becomes, the issue of the hallway versus the lunchroom, okay, and whether you allow them to or not. And so when we were considering what to do for this board workshop to help the board in their discussion, one of the things that I would kind of bring to the board's attention is that I deliberately left those off of the sheet. Because it's my belief that the people that are implementing it at the school level should be the people that should have great say within that, within that realm, okay? You listened to Mr. Daly last time we met, or two meetings ago, whenever it was, speaking about his experience as Middleburg High School's principal, and how discipline went down when he allowed it to occur in the cafeteria, because now students then have an opportunity to, to do that. We realize that parents sometimes want to contact their students, too. And so all of those things are, are factors that are in there. So my recommendation or my belief is that, and, you know, for the board to, to weigh in on, obviously, but is that the people at the school level that are actually implementing it should have great say in how it's implemented. You know, some people believe that it should be more stringent, and some people take the view that the world has changed dramatically since, since the days that we were all in school, okay? And so how to, how to implement something that's fair on this particular topic is, is very challenging. This is a, a more challenging topic than, than one might think.
Well, this is, this is great information you gave us. And my only concern about what you're saying, and I don't think we should do anything that's gonna interfere with the discipline of the administration. And I, I agree that, you know, allowing it to be used maybe in the hallway and cafeteria is fine. But I think we need to have consistency. Because we will get calls that will say, well, you know, originally, they can use their phone in the cafeteria, and Orange Park, they can't, and that's not fair. So I think we just need to be consistent with all our high schools and our junior high and our elementary. That would be my one concern.
Yeah, and I have the same, I have the same thought process that you have, but then I also took a step back and said, this is what we're currently doing.
Yeah.
Right? So we haven't gotten any of these concerns yet. And so maybe, maybe letting, you know, the saying is, sleeping dogs lie, maybe the better, the better course.
Did you want this new page to change what we've got in the code of conduct?
Yeah, I would like to add those.
Add to it.
Add to it, yeah. Because I just believe that those are common sense things. Hey, you shouldn't be videotaping and, and in certain private areas, restrooms, locker rooms, et cetera, that it's a privilege. It's not a right to have a cellphone or electronic. You can, in fact, use it when instructed to by the, by the teacher. It seems like common sense to me. And so nothing that, that we're looking to add to the policy, the suggestions, appears to be a problem, in, in my view. And then I was just transparent about the leaving off of the specifics of the hallway versus the cafeteria versus the parking lot versus the, and I can appreciate the consistency, you know, comment, but I can also.
You can change it, and if we see that there's a lot of feedback, we can always readdress it if we had to. But can I, can I ask one more question?
Mr. Bickner, how does all of this fall in line with the school board policy on cellphone use?
The current school board policy? The current school board policy is terrible. Bonnie actually dug it up for me.
Who wrote that policy?
Wait a minute.
Who wrote that policy?
Well, it was written in nineteen ninety-one. School boards were new.
When, when cell phones were this day, right?
And they, they fit in a back.
They were super.
I think it's their.
We were being very forward-thinking at that time. And we think, we're gonna need a policy for these new contraptions.
Well, actually, they did it because they were worried about drug sales on yaps.
Oh, yeah, sure.
And the new cell phones were great for drug sales.
Oh, yeah.
And I have others, if anybody else would like them, like the police.
You were ready for that question.
And what that current policy says under drug abuse and weapons policy, it says that individual school administration will establish a public guideline for authorized possession of pagers and cellular phones during extracurricular activities.
I don't know if anybody would a pager.
That is, yes. We still have, in our board policy, or what you're proposing, we still have in what's already in code of conduct, language about pagers. Although I don't know anyone that has one.
Beth has one.
I'm thinking of going to buy one just because it's off my cart. So the only other thing that I would point out, and I'm, I think it's, it's kind of mandatory, is, after the Parkland shooting, the legislature revamped one zero zero six point zero seven and put in there that a student may possess a wireless communication device while students on school property or in attendance at a school function. And so they've kind of taken away the consent aspect of it. The legislature has acted and said, students may do this. Because I think the big issue with Parkland was, people needed to have a way to call their parents and let them know they weren't dead. And so they did that, and they also put in the very first sentence, and you can see I've highlighted the second sentence about the May. But that very first sentence, they want, it says, each code shall include, but is not limited to, notice that a wireless communication device includes possibly the imposition of disciplinary action by the school or criminal penalties if the device is used in a criminal act. So what I think that you have here in, in the thoughts that have been put together by Ms. Fogarty and, and Mr. Rossky is good. I think it needs to be expanded to include those two things from one zero zero six or seven. One is that, while you say it's a privilege, I think the legislature has said you may have one. And that's kind of, they have spoken, two-thirds of the policies that I've seen around the state, is after we got these, I went back and looked. A lot of them use the verbatim language out of this statute that says, the student may possess a wireless communication device on school campus or at extracurricular, extracurricular activities. And I think that they did that because no one wants to argue that point. When somebody comes in and says, it's a right, and we can take away that right, well, the legislature said, you may do it, and we can regulate it.
So we omitted the, the first bulleted point on the piece of paper and added "have."
Well, is, they're possessing a cellphone even when it's in their backpack. Didn't we set up the rules as to when it can be out and actually be turned on and used?
You can regulate. That's what I just said. They may have it, but you can regulate it. And if somebody won't, won't cooperate, you can take it out of their hand, turn it off, and shove it in their backpack.
But we can't take it from them.
But I don't believe that you can take it physically from them. And not let them have it back. Now, I haven't seen any case law on this because it's new and nobody's argued the point. But that's what we're stuck with, is what the legislature did for all of their many patchworks after the Parkland shootings.
See, that's a bummer, because I really liked, there was, I'd have to find which one in here, but in the packet of samples that you guys gave us, there was one. in here, but in the packet of samples that you guys gave us, there was one where they spelled out the consequences for inappropriate use of a cellphone.
That was Collier County.
Was it Collier County?
Collier County.
And I thought it was excellent, an excellent way to, but if you're saying it's a right and not a privilege, I could see where that could be installed.
I, I don't know how else to read what the legislature said. It say you may do it and they supersede whatever choices we make. But they also did in the very next breath, each school board shall adopt rules governing the use of wireless communications devices while on school property or in attendance at a school function. And so you can make the rules, you can shut them down, you just can't take it away.
Right, which that would be fine, I mean if you can't prosecute.
Well, let me, let me ask if I made it. Let's say I'm in a fifth grade classroom, which is what the policy and the procedure is right now. And the phone goes off and everybody goes, ooh, Terry has her phone on. So I say, Terry, and this is the, the current practice would be Terry, I need to see your phone and I'm taking it to the assistant principal, you need to go to the assistant principal to pick up your phone at the end of the school day.
I have no problem with that. They're allowed to possess it, but you can't abuse it.
And the, and the reason that-
And it's a disciplinary matter if you do abuse it.
Right, and the reason that you do that is that if it continues to be, you know, Terry keeps letting her phone on, Terry, we've talked to you about this numerous times, then it has to go, then the parent is called by the assistant principal or the principal and, you know, there's a problem, Terry can't, you know, can't, doesn't know how to turn off her phone. And that happens as well, yes.
I was gonna say, if you're like me, you know, I just, I've always had a stupid phone, a flip phone up until about six months ago. I figured out how to turn it off, but the phone I've got in my pocket, since they don't service my flip phone anymore, I'm not sure how to turn it off.
Well, and it just, even, even when you turn it, I mean, we've all been sitting with the phone out, even if you turn it off, the ringer, you still get the buzz, in particular if it's sitting on, you know, whatever, as it's buzzing across the table.
I got mad and went and threw it in the Black Creek and it stopped ringing.
I guess my question is, if we have it in our policy, like the Collier County, where there are certain levels of degree of infractions and the punishment ultimately being removal of your phone, can we do that based on statute? As a disciplinary action, can we go ahead and say, you can pick your phone up at the end of the day, it will be in the principal's office? Or are we required to allow them to hold on to it at all times?
Mr. Rosky? So, so if I could, you know, if you, this would be my thought, but you're the attorney. If you have it codified in, in board policy, then there's no wiggle room at all. And that, that'd be a problem to actually implement something at, at the school level. So I would, my thought here was, if you recall, I think there was commentary made that we're talking about direction for the code of student conduct because that is a board approved document. And in my view, the, the policy that the board develops, whenever you address that again, should be more broad to allow for the flexibility to actually be implemented, you know, over time. So I would, I would just kind of remind people that the whole purpose of this was, we're gonna start kicking off the code of student conduct revisions to get ready for the next school year. The issue of cellphones was brought up. We're simply trying to get direction from the-
Broader is better because, you know, if, the whole problem with Louisiana law is they tried to codify every single thing there is. And so whenever you fall in a crack, and we've fallen in a crack on something else this week, you always have problems because then you have to figure out where to go with it. And so I think that he's right. I think it needs to be flexible enough that, that the principals can do what they need to do to run their school. Because I can tell you, my belief is that running Middleburg High School is a whole lot different than running Fleming Island High School. And I don't base that on anything other than the phone calls I get. And so I think they need that ability to do that. But ultimately, we're going to have to do something because it says in one zero zero six zero seven that we have to have a code of conduct, but it also says we have to have board policy. And when you adopt a code of conduct, it becomes part of board policy, but it's not the be all and end all of board policy. You have to have something more.
Could we possibly put in our policy that cellphone use, student cellphone use can be regulated in accordance with the student code of conduct? Would that be sufficient?
Is that even necessary if we were to just go with something like this and keep it very broad?
I, I'd have to think about the language that you would use there. What you can't have is you can't have something in policy and refer to another document that changes year to year.
Okay, right, wow, that's bad.
And say something like as amended or as legislated or as changed, no. And so you have to be careful with the language about that because you, it, it will fail.
Okay, that, so there were a couple of things that I thought we should consider when I looked through this packet with other school districts and what they do. One thing in particular, I'm gonna take this off first.
Which county are you looking at actually?
Um, so first, we can look at Oregon City County or City School. And in the middle of that paragraph, it says, students are required to use the Oregon Public Filtered Internet Access at all times with all electronic devices. Use of personal internet connections are prohibited. And I think, to me, what appeals to that is our wifi, I would assume, has guardrails on it. Where if they're using their own data plans, they could access Facebook, they can access Instagram, they can access YouTube. But in a classroom setting, I was talking to an elementary teacher about this, they have the ability, if it's connected to our wifi, to go in and shut off certain websites that even aren't blocked necessarily by our wifi guardrails, but the, the teacher can go and say, no, you're on YouTube, you don't need to be on YouTube right now, and shut it off in the classroom. So for that purpose, I really think that that would be a smart way for us to protect the kids from getting into situations that they shouldn't be getting into. And I'm thinking of situations we've had in the very recent past, that, you know, that's just another way to kind of put a stop, stopgap, that if you're in the classroom, you better be, you know, and the expectation is the teachers are gonna monitor it. When we say that they're being used for educational purposes only in the classroom and with express permission from a teacher, then my expectation is the teacher's going to be paying attention to what the students are doing on the devices. And from that one teacher's explanation, it sounds like it's kind of like a dashboard where they can see what the students are doing as long as they're connected.
And if they're on the proper, if they're on the proper program and they're working on something, yes, they do see exactly who's on it.
Right. So to me, that's an appropriate use for a cellphone in a classroom. And I, I liked that language as far as giving some more specific expectations about when we're using cellphones in the classroom, we're not playing games, we're not on social media, you know?
That's in the classroom, but then what happens when they go into the hallway or when they go into the cafeteria? And they're communicating with friends or whatever.
The rule still applies. Now, obviously, there's more opportunity to get away with breaking the rule at that point, but if they get caught-
And I mean, trying to, I can't imagine trying to go into a cafeteria like this picket was talking about and regulating, okay, which, what website are you, where are you, you know?
Right.
My understanding is many phones have their own hotspot.
Yes, they do.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes, they do. I, I just think, you know, because the, what I've heard from community concern is, well, how do they even have access to social media while they're at school?
They've got their phones, yeah, period.
So I, I just think it's something to consider. And even if you only put that clause when we're talking about, where's the language that was recommended? So students may use their electronic devices during instructional time for educational purposes when it's sanctioned by the classroom teacher. And then on that bullet point, you can put that that's, so in the classroom, we're all on school wifi, we're not using data.
I think that's gonna be very hard to enforce for our teachers and administrators. And I understand what you're saying and I understand that that is a better way to monitor what's going on, but they're sixteen, seventeen-year-old kids, we're, we're not gonna be able to, I mean, somebody give me an example who's been in the classroom, can you monitor something like that?
Well, I've been, yeah.
No.
It's gonna be very difficult. Because they can have open several different windows in their phone, flip back and forth.
Yeah, the most effective monitoring is whether they have it out or not.
And then you have to look at their screen to see if the wifi symbol on or the LTE symbol on.
But think about it, you're, you're in the front of class and you're teaching, you know?
Well, I would have said last, last time is that if, if the focus is, is gonna be instruction for three or four administrators and there's fifteen hundred kids or two thousand kids or twenty-seven hundred kids, that, what are you, what are you going to enforce? Because you can't enforce everything. There's just, otherwise you're a full-time policeman and you're no longer an educator because there's, there's, well, are they wearing hats or not wearing hats? Is the dress too short, is it not too short? Are they got their cellphone out or they not have their cellphone? Are they swearing and all? So you have to attack one thing and sort of envelop all of your resources around that one thing and tamp it down and then it's whack-a-mole. If the other thing comes up, you gotta go hit that thing. And if you, if you try to tackle everything at once, you know, tardies, all the things you wanted to address, you absolutely end up doing nothing because the resources are just too limited. And that's the practical reality of running a public school and it is what it is. And I think if you're, if you're pragmatic about it, you can attack something saturated with the available resources and, and you can get it into a manageable place. But as I said last time, and I've given this a lot of thought since, you know, I gave it a lot of thought as an assistant principal when I was in a transition at, at Fleming Island High School and then again as the principal, is ideally they wouldn't exist, but they do. And we didn't grow up with them, so we don't have etiquette and protocols in place. So we talked as a school community about what, what were our expectations, what do we think would work and be fair and manageable? And then the, the teachers, the student leaders, the administrative team together, we came together and said, well, we think we can do it this way. And then we taught those things at the beginning of the year in our teach-tos so that everyone in the whole campus was on the same page about our expectations. And that mitigated it for me. It was not perfect, no policy is, but it was so much better than what we had before. It was a very livable situation. The parents found it to be fair because they knew there were designated periods in the day they could contact their child without getting their child into trouble. Otherwise, it's like, just go sneak into the bathroom and call me, your dentist appointment might change. And we felt like we wanted to facilitate what I thought were reasonable requests from parents on those types of things. Can a child abuse that? Certainly. And we addressed those when they, when they came up. But overall, that approach to it made everyone as, it was, again, it was a consensus, not unanimity, but it put us in a much better place and allowed us to live with the device.
Now, was that, was that independent at Middleburg High School when you did that? Or did we do that at Oakley? Did we do it at Orange Park? Did we do it at all other schools?
We did almost the exact same thing, yeah. We, we arrived at it independently.
And I'm assuming throughout they were, right. And the junior highs, it's my understanding, don't want the open opportunity for students to use their cellphones.
They're a little bit more restrictive than the high school.
And that's, and to your point, and having been in junior high classrooms, when they are working together in a program, most of that's done on their personal devices, you know, and that's, and so as I'm thinking through, if somebody, rarely would they use a phone, but in the high school, those same, I mean, if they're on that program, the teacher can see that they're engaged. It's sort of like learning online. You can tell if a student's engaged or not. And so in one respect, yes, but if you look at the screen right now, you see that there are a number of things that are open across the top and, you know, I mean, yeah, there will be other, other programs on their phone that might be available, but they need to be engaged.
So you, when you look at the survey and, and it's not a surprise, anyone who's been in the schools is that, you know, you look at the junior highs and they're, they're a little more reticent to release that autonomy, because I think that's reflective of the maturity of, of the student at that age. The high school students are starting to drive, they're, they're encumbering more responsibility. And they also have additional responsibilities, like am I going to work, am I driving the ball press, am I picking up my younger sister? And so those, those types of, of freedoms are part and parcel to us teaching the whole child and making them responsible with, with not only cellphones, but other things that are adult responsibility.
I think we should be looking at the discipline. So I think Mr. Rosky's right, we should keep this broad and Mr. Bickner should come up with a policy that, you know, is in, that this would be in line with or the policy that meets statute. But I, that last incident that took place, I was very surprised and we had this conversation that they didn't come before the board for discipline. And I think if, if the principal feels that it warrants something severe enough, we need to take, you know, the steps and, and let that be the fear of abusing, you know, and maybe, you know, we don't see very many of them, does that mean it's not happening? You know, I mean, only, I remember four years ago, Mr. Daly, you probably remember that other incident that took place that did come before the board, but, and we see some less video bullying.
And it's a fine line between what's happening in school-
Right.
-and what's happening outside of school that relates to people from the school. And that's where-
With the cyber bullying stuff.
That's the cyber bullying comes up and, and I believe Chief Wagner was talking about the fact that so much of what we see, I mean, we've seen one too many videos from a bathroom recently and, I mean, fights and whatever, and those sorts of things have come up before us. But so much of this happens outside of the school setting, but it relates to people from the school. So where's that fine line that says, okay, we're disciplining them for something that they did in the Benjamin Ohm on Facebook or whatever Snapchat or whatever?
But we have a policy that addresses that. So anytime something that takes place outside causes a disrupt, a disruption inside our classroom or our school, that's cyber bullying that we then have to act on. We have a policy that talks about that. So maybe we need to be more forceful with the discipline aspect of abuse for the cellphones. And I don't mean just pulling out, calling mom to say, did they change my doctor's appointment? But this, the stuff of the nature of what we saw a few weeks ago, you know?
So, so if I just could, you know, each discipline incident is covered under the code of student conduct, but the code of student conduct is broad to allow flexibility based on the severity of the incident, which is different. The, the number of times that this student has been involved in the similar instances are also considered in when you actually apply disciplinary consequences. And so I, I don't believe that you can unilaterally just come up with a policy or a plan related to that because there are way, way too many specifics that go into making that decision relative to the incident that occurred, et cetera. And so I think it'd be very difficult for a board to do that and I would strongly advise against it.
Well, no, I mean, we defer certainly to the principals to bring it to the board, but I, my thought is we don't need to change the policy on that, but enforce the discipline action more often. I, I think anything that deals with racism should have come to the board.
Well, I, I think that's a separate issue from cellphones.
Well, it, it's the same issue because it was a cellphone that was used in school.
I understand that, but the discipline to me needs to be based on the action. So I think that the discipline for improper cellphone use is going to be different than bullying, right? So, and it just depends on how, how the referral is written, right? So if you're, and for example, I talked to a parent, actually the substitute teacher, who had a situation with a kid who had headphones and, during instructional time and the, the substitute told the student to take the headphones out and the student refused and the substitute felt like, well, they're allowed to have them, so my hands are tied, which that's false because that's insubordination. So the issue is not necessarily the headphones, the issue is that you're refusing to obey your teacher.
Right.
So I think that, to your point, there's definitely ways to have more stringent discipline for an action like what we saw in that situation versus a child who repeatedly is accepting phone calls during the day. You know what I mean? So if, while we're talking about cellphones, the, the discipline policy that I liked was actually in Kansas City Public Schools and it's on the first page. And it spells out first infraction, second infraction, third infraction. And I really liked the fact that you get three strikes and then three strikes you're out and your cellphone is gonna sit with the district until the end of the school year. But I don't know if that will jive with our state statute, so, and again, this is Kansas City, so it's a different state. But I think there has to be some sort of teeth behind improper use of a cellphone. And I don't know if maybe it's like we talked about, that it, it then becomes an insubordinate issue, that if they continue to misuse their cellphone, that they'll be disciplined based on insubordination, not on the cellphone policy. But I agree with Ms. Karikas that the discipline could be hairy on that situation.
I, I like the idea of a parent having to come and pick it up because when it interferes with the parent's day, then there's gonna be consequences for the kids.
Yeah, this is, this is, the third infraction is pretty severe. I can't imagine that we'd get away with that. I can't imagine how they get away with that, but yeah.
Did you have other?
The only other thing that I wanted to just put out there for consideration and I, I fully support- and I fully support that principals need to be the ones that are creating these rules since they're the ones who are ultimately responsible for enforcing them. But when I think about cellphone use in the cafeteria, it's important to me that students learn that table time is not cellphone time. I mean, that's a rule that we enforce in our own house. And I wanna make sure we're graduating kids who know how to have lunch with a potential associate or a potential client, that those conversational skills are important. And I do see the advantage to handing a cellphone to a child. I see it all the time in restaurants. Mom and dad will hand out a device, and the table's perfectly quiet, but nobody's communicating. So I just, I think there's a tight line to walk on that, so that we're still encouraging.
Communication.
Communication. And I think about those students who don't have cellphones. And, you know, if everybody at the table is on their phone, what is that child left to do? But stay at their food quietly while everybody else is on their phone.
I think about the kid who doesn't have a network of friends and might be sitting by himself. You know, he can at least be reading something on his cellphone or playing a game or something.
That's gonna be a advantage.
There's a lot of kids like that, you know?
Yeah, it's tough. I see it both ways. I see that too, you know, families that go out to eat and all four of them are sitting on their cellphones.
That's what I was thinking.
And I totally get it.
And parents are sometimes the worst about it.
Absolutely.
Parents are worse than the kids a lot of the time.
You see the parents on the cellphones, and then the kids are goofing around, and they say, stop that. And they go right, and I'm thinking, then talk to them.
Yeah, but then too, to put on my principal hat, too, you know, parents have an expectation, especially among high school-age students, that they can communicate with their students. So you have to kind of designate a time for that to occur. And, believe me, there's plenty of conversation going on in a high school cafeteria when you got 2,700 of them in a building. They're all talking, but it's an opportunity to do that. So I realize it's a tough line to walk.
Well, and to Ashley's point, elementary school and junior highs, definitely elementary school, but it sounds like junior high too, move cellphones throughout the day. So they do have that time in the lunchroom to socialize and talk and carry out a few kids. And so, I think, I wouldn't be comfortable adding that to the secondary high school level just because of, I agree with what Mr. Rosky said.
And here again, I think Ms. Pickett said this, that, you know, when you get into, and this is true in elementary and it's true in junior high. Kids eat their lunch, they stand in line, they get their lunch, they sit down, they eat. What they, I mean, they're given a nice lunch. They look at this and they choose what they want to eat and leave the rest for grabs. But then they're done. And they eat within 10 minutes. They don't, they, and then they're available. And that's, I mean, that's when they're talking. I mean, even now, so many of the elementary schools, when you go into a cafeteria for lunch.
Oh, they're loud.
They're still loud, and they're half as full. I mean, or they're all sitting on one side of a table, so they're not facing somebody for lunch. And I mean, they are still talking. They are still, I mean, you know, it's like, oh, you know, it gets, and that, depending on the group and depending on the age, it sometimes gets louder or softer, depending. But, yeah, I, as much as I would love to see that, because we were the same. I mean, you just don't bring your phone to the table, period. Leave it in the other room.
And I visited a St. Augustine School one time, and they were so busy signing, and finally the
They weren't eating.
That's it. The person at the front signed, "Stop talking and eat." But you just saw these hands going in.
Hands going in.
So if I could kind of bring some closure to this. So here's what I heard, and correct me if I didn't hear this correctly. We need to take a look at the language, the suggested ad of privilege due to the statute piece of that. I kind of feel like we should take a close look at the wording to make sure it's in line. We like the other language, seemed to be, I didn't sense any objections to the other language that was there. What I did hear was, you know, some concern over having a specific plan or consequences, you know, for it. But then I also heard that, you know, each situation's different, and difficulty in doing that and confiscating on phones might not be appropriate, you know, given Florida statute, et cetera, et cetera. So I feel good in the sense that the suggested language here for the Code of Student Conduct Committee to look at, it seems to be appropriate. The Board seems to be in favor of those additions, based on just what I've heard here. I think the Board is going to take a look at Board policy and make some policy decisions that would be in line with what we're suggesting, because now we're starting that. Is there anything else as far as direction that the Board would like to give?
I just don't want to ever see a time where we, where an administrator or a schoolperson couldn't take a phone away if they needed to. If I thought, it's like a pencil. I mean, that's a right and a privilege too, but if a kid's stabbed, another student, I'm taking it away. And the same thing with a phone, cellphone, if they're using it for
Inappropriately.
Appropriately, calling in a 99911 call, or doing something that I could take that phone without, I mean
Sounds like we could, right? Like, Mr. Vickner, didn't you say that we can regulate? So if they're using it inappropriately, the teacher has the authority to take it away?
It could be taken away if they needed to.
I think you can take it away, but I don't know how far that goes. Can you take it away for the day? Eh, maybe, but can you take it away for the year? I don't think so.
Right.
No. The phone back goes to statute, yes. You can discipline, you can make rules, but they may bring a cellphone to school and to activities that are associated with school. And that's kind of the long and the short of it. Again, the problem is, just like Mr. Rosky's saying, if you make things too stringent or too focused. This is very focused, this statute's focused. And they don't give you any real details about how to do that. That gets hashed out every time somebody sues somebody, and it gets a little bit less or more obfuscated. So I think, you know, in line with Ms. Bullock's concerns, I think you can do what you have to do to run your school. But I think that the language is clear that it needs to be somehow included in whatever code of conduct we have. The other thing that I have as a thought is, if you write a code of conduct that meets statutory requirements and meets the needs of the school, it's easier for me to work backward to a Board policy than it is to take a Board policy and then try and draft a code of conduct. The code of conduct is what everybody needs to work from. The Board policy is more focused, but I can tailor a Board policy to a code of conduct and still meet the statutory requirements and make it meshed together and make sense. So I'm saying, do one first, and I'll do the other second.
If we were to take the recommended additions to what we currently have, does that work with what you're thinking?
I don't have, I have no problem with that whatsoever, as long as you add some language to make it comply with 100607. The other thing that I would do is, ultimately, I'm going to have to change that 4.05 because that's no longer the primary concern. The primary concern now is use of cellphones for all of the other things that are distracting in a school situation.
Right.
Drug dealers have whole different ways of doing stuff now, I think. I'm not sure what they have.
I do have one other question. Do you guys want to address cellphone use on school buses?
On school buses?
Is that something we want to address?
There's a, yeah, the current policy, going back to, I think there was a policy
In the code of conduct, yeah.
And it was student conduct on the school bus. Now, that's
Was there anything in this code of conduct you didn't remember?
No, no, this is fine. I just was asking if
No need for the school bus code of conduct.
Yeah, wouldn't it be the, if you look right below?
I don't know if I have that. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Because I kind of thought this covered things well.
Yeah, I don't see anything about cellphones.
It doesn't say, I don't think it says anything about cellphones.
Yeah, I didn't think so. And again, that might be something that's different for elementary than it is for secondary. But I think we probably should address this. And maybe it's something that it's at the discretion of the school bus driver. I mean, it's, but, you know, I think it should be something that we talk about.
I would assume that the same thing holds true, that if, I mean, this is a bring-your-own-device-on-any-school property. And a school bus is considered school property.
Right.
And I would assume that a school bus driver would probably, here again, elementary school, the elementary students may be able to power up their phones so that the parents know that they're on their way home.
Absolutely.
I mean, you're talking about a GPS system.
Right.
The junior high similarly, and the high school. And my other thought on that is that if it happens in the cafeteria that we allow them to use their cellphones, and the noise level goes down, wouldn't that be wonderful on the school bus? That the noise level would go down.
Could we just incorporate the word "school bus" into the, you know, when you talk about the policy on school grounds, classroom, cafeteria, school bus? Just add "school bus" into that cellphone use code of conduct section, and also cellphone use for the policy? Then the same would apply for, in the physical building, as it would on the bus?
Well, and it does, like, the first line, "Taking photographs or videos by any means whatsoever while on school property or while on school transportation," is prohibited. So it says it there. And then the only exceptions of this prohibition are, and then that goes on. And then the publication of any internet site of any photographs, videos, or images taken in violation. But that's not, yeah, it's still that fine line, what we were talking about before. But then it goes specifically into schools, so
But as long as it has the school transportation
It does have school transportation, which is considered school property, which encompasses all of the rules, I would assume. And here again, a bus driver
Impossible to enforce when you've got your back to the kids.
Oh, gosh, yeah. Yeah. And that's, I mean, and truly, kids that, I mean, and I haven't been in the classroom for five years, and I know that they're probably even more savvy now, but they power up, I'm certain, as soon as they walk out the door to the classroom.
Oh, yeah.
Or even when they're still sitting, they're packing up. Because particularly if they're walking or riding their bikes, their parents are like, mm, you will. Put this on so I can haul you home.
When I watch the school bus videos, because whenever we have a bus accident or an incident on the bus, I get to see those videos along with Chris Isaiah. So when I'm watching the school bus video, and I'm watching the school bus driver, and she's looking out here, and she's also got to monitor what's going on behind her and what's going on all around her, it would really concern me if she's sitting there worrying about what you're doing with your cellphone.
Exactly.
I mean, right now, they crash buses, and things happen on buses that they need to have their eyes on what they have their eyes on.
That's right.
Most of the time, we'd like if you can get them to sit down.
I think verbally, they try to enforce them because, I mean, the rules are up there on the
Right.
But, you know, you just have to
At the beginning of the year, everybody goes through all the rules and, yeah, exactly. There was one, I'm sorry, is there anything else that?
No, no, that's it.
I loved in Oregon, the fact that a teacher could have a sign that said, "No electronic devices permitted at this time."
Yeah, I agree.
And if there was something uniform, and I don't know, I mean, you know, it's something that a teacher can slap up and just say, this is, we're in the middle of a test. And don't give me that, you told me I could use my phone, and I was done. You know, no, the sign's up, you're not, it's not on, period. And that gives us one more sort of opportunity to say, uh-uh. We can see a picture right here, the sign was up, whatever. And there was one other comment about, I know that each school has their own, in essence, these are our, this is our operating procedure. And I don't know if we need to relate to that at all in our Code of Student Conduct. You know what I'm saying? Do we need to refer to additional information at the secondary level? A line that says, "And further clarification during the orientation at school." You know, something like that. Just so, it's one of those loopholes that I keep thinking, well, it wasn't in the Code of Student Conduct. It's given here, it's given at the school. I don't know if we need that.
I see that as no different than the restart plan. The last paragraph that I put in that restart plan said that Mr. Rosky had the ability to manipulate that within the parameters of the restart plan to meet the needs as they came about. And I think you can do that with school principals as well. You could put something in code of conduct and also in Board policy that says, and I'd have to think the language through, that the administrator of the school site has the ability to, or the, may manipulate or add to or refine those policies in order to meet the specific individual needs of the school site. Because that's, like I said, I think they are all different.
Yes, oh, absolutely.
I think Oregon High School's a lot different than Keystone.
And that's why I was like, well, we don't want to put individual, but something
You don't want to lock people up.
A row.
You don't want to keep their hands tied, because, again, whenever there's a crack in the armor, someone's gonna find it.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And so then we gotta try and manipulate things around and make things fit. So I agree with you, I think, but I think the principals can do that. But we need to put the language in there to allow it to do.
To allow it, yes.
There's an example of that in the Charlotte policy. And in the last third of the first paragraph, it says, "The principal may put additional rules in place permitting student use of cellphones during non-instructional times of the school day."
I like that, yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
"The principal must assure that these rules are publicized."
Publicized to students and parents, so there you go.
Okay, so we need to give direction. Do we, are we all comfortable with the original Code of Conduct? And then add Mr. Rosky's new stuff and have Mr. Vickner incorporate statute and what you and Ashley were just talking about?
Well, this, in essence, replaces the bring-your-own-device-on-theoriginal-student-conduct. So it's not, I mean, it replaces that section.
One you wanted to add?
I don't think it already is.
It's the beginning of the year.
Not a bring-your-own-device-in-the-current.
So you'll incorporate and bring us something new?
Correct. It'll be, so just so you know, just for clarification, the whole Code of Student Conduct, there's a whole committee of folks that are involved in that. The thought process was, we want to make sure we incorporated the Board's thoughts before we got the whole committee, the people together.
So that, this covers those thoughts.
I think we're good.
And we need statute in there. So have Mr. Vickner review to make sure we're on legal ground.
And he's already working on that, Mr. Vickner, right?
And at the same time
You're working on the, and you're working on the change in our policy? Incorporating it statute, okay?
Until I get a Code of Conduct to look at
Correct, right.
There's not much way that I can change that. I know that we're working on, Ms. Palmer's working on other things having to do with discipline that she and I were talking about.
Yes, God. And your third thing, I'm sorry.
I don't remember what it was.
Sorry. You were saying it, and I thought, wait, I thought we had talked about that? And I thought he had talked about that?
As long as we are all the same age about
And at the same time you were saying
The Code of Conduct, and we're addressing the policy issue, that was just the two things.
There was just, I just had a comment about the upcoming disciplinary hearings. You had said that we may be meeting as early as 2:45?
It appears that way. I mean, Stephanie Palmer will still
And that can change, but there were three that were, that were reviews, or
Two of the emails.
Two.
Two appeals.
Two appeals, so it'll be an interesting day, a very full day at the next meeting, so. Anything else?
That's it, I'm good.
Mr. Vickner, any other comments?
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Bullock?
I just want to give a shout out to the Operations Department. The laundry facility at Keystone Heights High School's coming along. I was there the other day. I had somebody donate some tables, folding tables for their laundry, and I saw them scraping the paint, getting rid of the paint, so I appreciate that. I did understand there were two broken water lines at Keystone Elementary School over spring break.
Yes, ma'am, there were.
Sure, and that's been repaired, I assume?
Yes, ma'am, both been repaired.
Okay, thank you. And that was over spring break, correct?
That was during spring break.
Thank you.
Two what lines?
Two water lines.
Oh, water lines, we got it.
Thankfully, it happened during spring break.
Yes, yeah. Oh, Mr. Vickner?
There is one thing that I need to bring up. I apologize, I've been asked about the application process for the OSU committee. If you go to the website, go to EdFirst, click on EdFirst, takes you right to it. Then you click on the application, or you can click on the, it was all done. And I think Sabrina Thomas went hot yesterday.
Okay, thank you.
And I think she's working with Ms. Bins to make sure that everything is spelled to the right.
Right, so now, if we know of people who are interested in applying to be on that committee, we can tell them, go here and click on EdFirst and everything. that committee, we can tell them, go here and click on EdFirst and everything will come up.
They can fit it out online, it's all, it's an interactive system, or they can print it out and do a big application.
Can we see who's applied yet?
No, it just went hot yesterday.
So you'd have to talk to Ms. Dennis.
And I talked to Ethan yesterday about it, because the applications go to C O C Application at OneClay.net and I was trying to log in and I caught myself kicked out, so he's resetting my password. Because the idea is as soon as they come in, and I was having him add Bryce to it as well, so as soon as they come in, we can look at it real quick and then forward it to you guys for the each person, so that you're not getting, which we were going to say, like, the application deadline for it. Did we discuss a deadline of when we're going to?
So I was looking at potentially April twenty-third as a deadline to put it on the May sixth board agenda.
If we were to do that, we need to put a deadline on the website.
Correct, so there's not a deadline of like how long we're keeping this open to accept applications, but then talking with Bryce yesterday, we want to ensure that you guys have enough time that if you want to discuss at the next workshop, which is March, or April, sorry, April, I missed my phrase, April, the end of April, twenty, April twenty-seven. So even if you had it as the deadline on the twenty-third, if we're filtering, it's like Bryce, Sabrina and I are filtering it to you guys, it wouldn't be like giving you a stack to look at last minute. It would be something that you've kind of been able to review as it goes, that, you know, there could be a discussion then if you guys want it on the the workshop and then with a proposal of the committee approved at the May sixth, the board meeting, if you would want to look at it like that way, the timeline. But right now, we give them about a full month for you guys to work with people. And then also talking with Bryce, is that something where you guys would want us to put out like a social media blast on our social media that's like, hey, website links for this, go to the EdFirst if you're interested and we can kind of make sure, Sabrina's kind of managing that while Nicole's out, just get a couple posts up where we have it so people can click right from our Facebook and Instagram or share with somebody else, like, oh, hey, the application's live.
Facebook and Instagram would be great and then we can share as well.
Correct.
So that's, yeah, I mean, as people, yeah, send it out, so get it out as much as possible. That would be great.
Literally right on, like when you go to OneClay.net, it's under the EdFirst tab. So there's the tab that says EdFirst and then there's the dropdowns on the side, it's the first one after home that says Citizen Oversight Committee, but we don't have an end date on it. So that was something, I know we discussed yesterday, is we'll bring it up like an end date of when we would stop applications for you guys.
And that would, yes, great. Does anyone have any concerns about making it the end of April at this stage? If we don't have enough applications at that point, we can always extend it.
Yeah, and then if we see them coming in, it was, and I think I did that before with the district advisory committee, I would say like, hey, I'm going to be able to send you three, or I'm going to send you this many, or, you know, you don't have any in your area right now, so we'll kind of be able to monitor it each week.
I just brought it up, it's very easy. Next, 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 nice, nice.
Looks good.
It does, it looks very good, thank you. And thanks for letting us know that this is hot now, because this is.
Ms. Thomas was the one that actually put it together. I told her, I handed her everything, told her it's all her problem.
Right, so if we owe you complaints, we complain to Sabrina and not you, got it, got it.
And Bruce, if you need any cell phone help, talk to Sabrina.
Just show me how to turn it off.
The white creek is open, I think.
Two eighteen, there's lots of construction, you go slow, you just, there you go, sorry. Ms. Karikas? Ms. Clark?
I need to just follow up on a couple of things because citizens are asking. I think a while back I had asked about the students that live around Orange Park Elementary. There can't be that many of them, but instead of them taking a bus to another school, what's the possibility of them being allowed to go to that concept school? Obviously, they have to follow the rules that all other students do, but instead of having to go through the Lotto process, you're not.
Do they get a little bit of benefit because they are neighborhood?
Because it's a walk to school.
That's really not a neighborhood school, that's a concept school for the entire county, so we would be, have to.
Also the space available.
Right, right, so it would have to.
But as you get up to the second and third grade, it's a little bit easier to get them.
Kindergarten, first grade, very tough to get in. Just something you're asking for. And going back to Dave Coughlin's introduction at our last board meeting and on the email that we all received, I think the questions at hand, we need to find out when that video was implemented to our subs for training. And we want to find find out who approved it or whether it's just in the contract with Kelly that they're allowed to add and subtract as we go along, so that we know, you know. And and personally, I know it's not a horrendous, there's nothing that really stands out, but I don't see the need to put it back in for the training. I think an hour and twenty-minute video on top of everything else that they're having to deal with for emergency situations isn't a training for us, but that's a personal.
Yeah, and question, Kelly Services is a national. So depending on when they did this video, I mean, that's, it's probably something that's corporate and we just happen to get what they do nationally, and I don't.
But it depends on what our contract says.
Correct.
Or whether we have to.
So we can, we can certainly look into when that was implemented. My email returned back is that, you know, this particular vendor is one of fourteen hundred vendors that the district does does business with and they all have employees that are trained within that business. I invited any individual who'd like to and the board themselves to go through the training themselves if there's any issues related to this particular appointment. Sometimes people will look at things and they'll have an interpretation of that and perhaps have an interpretation out of context. And so it would be important to come in and actually do due diligence and see that. I mean, anybody can speak to a topic, but when you speak to a topic, you should do the research to see what exactly in context, in the total context, the information's given. And so that's very clear to, I'll make it clear to the board also, if you have any objection or concern, please come in and and view it for yourself related to it. I've been assured that there is no concern.
And our contract, you said, is up in twenty-three, so we've got two more years.
Twenty-three, yeah.
Two more years.
And that was, and that.
It's a long contract, five years.
We have a lot of, not a lot, but we have, five-year contracts are not unheard of.
Right.
Yeah.
And it's, and we did do, we just, well, five, twenty-eighteen, so, yeah, it was two years ago. And there were other court, other organizations that we looked at.
And at the time, we really wanted to bring our substitute teachers back in house, that was kind of our goal, but when we looked at the financials, it just was not feasible.
It's when the, there was a study that was done in two thousand and eighteen, it's actually, according to that study, an eight point six percent decrease in cost from, we assumed it ourselves.
A decrease in cost?
Yes, it's actually, it's actually cheaper because, don't forget, you have the Affordable Care Act.
No, we went to Kelly.
You're saying it backwards.
Did I say backwards?
Kelly Services is cheaper. You got my hopes that Mr. Brodsky don't.
No, we went with more expensive, no, we did not.
Well, I think overall, some things, we we can't always look at the budget bottom line. I mean, we don't do the transportation or we wouldn't have bus drivers or buses.
True.
You know, and we.
But we wouldn't have the service either. I can tell you, those that contract out, those districts cannot, they have terrible time.
Yep. So, I mean, we can't always look at.
I agree with you on that, and we're in a different financial situation now than we were in twenty-eighteen.
I mean, I, it's unbelievable how many people come to me and who had been sub teachers and said, I find it so impersonal now, I don't even want to be a part of it. And I haven't had one person come to me and say, we're so happy to have Kelly over us doing it ourselves. I haven't had that, it's been totally the opposite, so I think.
I would talk to some of the principal secretaries, I I'll be honest, I was asked to become an assistant principal a number of years ago because of my background and I, you know, and I thought, no. And one of the things that kept me from being an assistant principal was calling for subs. There's no way that I was going, I, that's not why I was in education and I would not, I mean, I'm just, you're going, no, 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 no. I mean, it was the five AM phone calls and the, oh, my child vomiting now and, oh, my, how am I going to find a sub? And yes, every school, every school has their crew, their their typical subs. As a teacher, I had my favorite subs. There was, in fact, I was at a concert at Oakley recently and I ran into one of my old subs and I said, are you still subbing? She was awesome. And she said, no, because of COVID, she obviously wasn't getting any work at that time, but then, but that's, I mean, that broke my heart.
Sure.
Because she was awesome and she, I mean, I would have no months in advance together, so it's it's tough.
You can look for ways to create that kind of atmosphere.
Sure, absolutely, and that was with Kelly, I mean, so.
But when I look at the twelve dollar an hour pay, you know, that's something else.
Well, that would have changed a little.
And we had at one time, I think we probably changed it maybe four years ago, the salary for our subs.
Oh, for, I mean, the different.
We we went in line with what Saint John's was paying and Duvall, because we had, I think they averaged with a hundred and with a master's degree, one twenty-five a day, we lowered it to be in line with the, all the other counties because, again, you know, the funding, the funding's not there.
We'll say in years, every time.
Yep. Ms. Gohausen?
Nothing for me. Nothing for me.
Okay, and I have nothing more to to say, so thank you all for being here today. This may mean some.